Stand for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we're going to recommend moving the, removing item six A to six B. So we'll have the system development fee, public hearing first, or the conclusion of that prior to the two annexations. And just to note that we will not need a closed session this evening.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with those changes.
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the agenda with those additional changes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Up next, your consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Up next, under administrative items, will be advisory board bylaws update. Give the floor to Town Clerk Heidi Holland.
Mayor and council, bylaws for all advisory boards were adopted, excuse me, at the December 4th, 2023 meeting. Tonight's request is to change the officer's section, excuse me. Tonight's request is to change the officer's section in these bylaws to have the chair and vice chair to be voted on at the March meetings instead of the January meetings. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. To just change the chair and vice chair to be voted on in March instead of January.
Questions or comments for staff? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
A motion to what?
To approve.
Thank you. Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Up next will be the Harvest Festival update with Dana Wooton, Chamber of Commerce President and CEO.
Bring that down just a little bit. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council staff. And we appreciate the opportunity to be here. Dana Wooton, President and CEO of the Clayton Chamber of Commerce. This is my first opportunity to address this new Chamber Council, and we appreciate you allowing us to speak. I brought my team with us today, with me tonight, because I wanted to introduce them to you. For those of you who do not know, this small in number but mighty team at the Clayton Chamber of Commerce. So I have Anthony Mitchell, he's our Director of Marketing and Communications. We have Valerie Mullins, and she is our Business Development and Investor Relations Specialist. And then we have Maria Smith, and she is our Director of Events and Operations. And I just wanted to say that the Harvest Festival is a legacy event in this town. It's been around in some shape or form since 1951. And we really appreciate the fact that this town has been so supportive of this event in the seven years that I have been President of the Chamber of Commerce. And while this is an economic impact driver for our town, it also showcases what this wonderful town has to offer to the residents, to the community, and to the businesses here. And we want to make sure that we are diligent in showcasing all of that properly. And I think we do a great job. And one of the things that I love at the end of that Saturday, that very exhausting Saturday, is to think about the faces of the community and the people who attend the festival. The vendors, the business owners, the children, the moms and dads having just a good time. And I really think it brings an elevated quality of life to this town. I've had so many people talk about this festival as, you know, I wish we did something like that in our community. And so Maria is going to address you guys and thank you personally for what you have allowed us to do and provide the resources that you do for us. Maria?
Thank you, Dana. Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, staff. On behalf of the Clayton Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors and our staff, we would like to express our gratitude for all the support that is given to us by this town to make this event happen for our community. Amy Sharon, Clayton PD, Clayton Fire Department EMS, Utilities and Park and Recreations are an amazing team for us to work with. According to a placar report, just to give you a little bit of numbers, on Saturday alone, we hit over 20,000 people in attendance. And 50% of those visits were from out of the town of Clayton. So what that tells us is our Harvest Festival gives an opportunity for people who do not normally come to Clayton to come and see what a great and amazing town and downtown area that we have. The four-day, all over attendance for the four-day event drew 34,000, over 34,000 visitors over four days. We all have heard it takes a village to make things happen, but I am so proud that this village shows up time and time again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. This is my first little speech. Well, I want to thank Dana and Valerie, Maria and Aunt. There you go, thank you. I can't say enough about this event, and I've been probably more involved with this event with my relationship with the Chamber and the positions I've held there than most anybody on the council. And what I can say is the collaboration between the town and the Chamber has been spectacular. And if there's ever an issue with the Harvest Festival, from vendors to people attending, there's nobody more accommodating or more open to hear what the concern is than the Chamber. So I would say to you, if you've been to the Harvest Festival, if you've participated in the Harvest Festival and you've had an issue, and you didn't go speak to the Chamber about whatever your issue was, then you missed out on an opportunity to work with a team that is over the top spectacular. And thank you for an amazing event year over year. Thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Yeah, I just would like to personally thank Dana, yourself and your team. You guys do an outstanding job. I think at the end of the day, these numbers speak for themselves in the standpoint of the Chamber for businesses want to get people just not in the town, but also outside of the town to get eyes on there. So the visibility and to showcase the town and what Clayton is and the opportunity that people get to walk up and down the sidewalks is an amazing part to showcasing what Clayton is. So again, and just for me, and I'm not sure the rest of the town council feels the same way, but thank you guys for all you do. And, you know, it started with, she said, 1951. I'm quite sure we'll be going into 2051, and it'll be even bigger and better.
Awesome. Anyone else?
Well, I haven't been around since 1950, but I remember it as far back as when it was the Soybean Festival. And that was probably in the early 70s, I would think. And it's always been an opportunity for Clayton to showcase itself and our community and our town. It's always been an opportunity for organizations and churches to get out into the forefront, kind of introduce themselves to the people in this town and in our region. It's just been something that has always been there to help promote Clayton. And, you know, I remember being a florist on Main Street in the mid 90s, and it was Harvest Festival time, and we knew we had a bunch of people coming in, you know? So we actually wanted to be able to enjoy everything that the Harvest Festival had to offer. So we made sure we got our work done early, and we were able to lock our door and actually go out and enjoy the festival and meet the different civic organizations and all of that. It was a great opportunity to engage with the public. For us, I don't think for me, back in the day, it was really about bringing customers into my flower shop at that time, but it was more about being out there with the people and just celebrating what a wonderful town we have. And it does take an entire village to pull this off. I've enjoyed watching the Harvest Festival grow over the last 10 years. And really, for me, not so much from the perspective of being in the middle of it and seeing all the crowd, but really just observing it from my neighborhood over on Smith and Horn Street, and how parking used to stop at Second Street, and now how parking goes all the way down Smith Street, almost to First Citizens Bank where people are parking, and then walking up to Smith and Main, and then walking all the way down Main to get to the Central Business District, you know? And seeing how many people are enjoying what is going on at the Clayton Harvest Festival. So I thank you and your team for all the hard work. You know, it takes, it does take an entire village to pull something off like this, but it's such a phenomenal promotion for the community that we all love and represent. So thank you for that. Okay? Anyone else? All right, if not, we're going to move on to public hearing. The first one is going to be the update to the system development fees. And I call Joshua Beard, Engineering Director, and Acting Water Resources Director, and any other title we decide to give him between now and the close of business.
Good evening. Again, Joshua Beard, Engineering Director, Acting Water Resource Director. And what else gets tossed this way? Item for you is not necessarily new, we've been providing some updates, but is a request to adopt updated system development fees and the public hearing associated with adoption of new development fees. So just a quick recap, system development fees are those upfront charges that new development or increases in capacity users pay for what it takes, the town, those capital projects of infrastructure to build that capacity into our system to be able to provide for that growth, provide for that new capacity. Again, existing customers, existing users that are not increasing capacity do not pay. They pay into their commodity rates. The system development fees are just for those entities or new connections that put additional strain or additional request on the system and for us to be able to build that capacity, both to be able to treat and/or convey the transmission for any type of water or wastewater project into the system. Back in 2017, House Bill 43436 revised how the fees were calculated. It set up certain structures and certain methods by which the calculation must be performed by. The calculations are there to inform what the maximum can be. The House bill does not require adoption of the maximum fee. We've hired consultants from Black and Beach to perform the analysis. They also performed the analysis back in 2018. They've completed that analysis, and on October 2nd, Robert Chambers of Black and Beach and I were here briefing you on that update. The fees have gone up. The, a lot of the result, and it's really multifactorial, was really the revamp of our CIP process that we've gone through and done, really looking at holistically what other water and sewer project needs are there, as well as additional construction costs and material costs that we've seen and ran into. We have firm numbers on what the new Sam's Ranch Water Reclamation Facility is. So that was baked into it, as well as we are working towards. And we know that there is some future water project that we also must be planning for. And so this update and this updated analysis does take into account, again, revamped CIP, several new projects to really be able to provide the capacity for the town and the growth that we're seeing and planning for the future. The, through discussions, we have recommended a phased implementation approach. Seeing as there is somewhat of a large increase, we have had some discussions and recommended an implementation schedule. I'll show, this is, this is the, based on the analysis, this slide was also provided on October 2nd and also provided in the 45-day comment period that has since now ended. But this is based on the meter sizes and what we call a meter equivalency. The standard 5/8 inch residential meter is what we consider that equivalent unit. That is, it has basically one meter equivalent. As we go into larger meters, it's based on how that compares to that standard 5/8 inch meter. And so this table here shows what the analysis indicated the maximum that the adoption, what we could adopt. And as you can see, we also have calculated on what a per gallon, a gallon per day usage would be for water and also for expansion of wastewater. On water side, it was $15.42 gallons per day, and then $24.41 gallons per day for wastewater on the sewer side. I won't run through all the numbers on this line here. I'll just, again, I'll just mention the 5/8 inch and that standard, which is the one, the meter equivalency of one. The total max was around $13,020 that the analysis provided. This was put out to public comment for 45 days, and we did not receive any comments on the analysis or the numbers. And then the next steps now is the public hearing associated with adoption of the fees. As I mentioned earlier, in terms of the implementation schedule, what we have recommended was new fees to go into effect tomorrow, so January 2024, an additional increase in July of this year with the new budget is adopted. And then with each budget year from there, an increase of about $1,200 total for a residential unit for both water and sewer. So that $1,200 is the combined for our water and sewer, and roughly $1,200 until we reach up to that max. This also gives us time to continue to work on the future water project, the water supply project, and really determine what those total project costs are, hone in on that, and likely be doing a, an additional analysis once that really project comes to fruition and we understand what those total budget dollars are. So this is the proposed implementation scan, implementation plan that we would be asking you to approve tonight. And then, again, I'll show the actual, earlier I showed the maximum. This is the prorated for the meter equivalencies on what we would be requesting you to adopt tonight that would go into effect tomorrow within an additional crease in July. So for the standard 5/8 residential unit, it would be a total of $8,000 for that residential unit. And then on, those are also prorated to the per gallons that we discussed. And so it would be a $7.05 for water and $17.70 for sewer. And anything above a two-inch meter would be subject to a developer's agreement that would have to come before Town Council. And so with that, this is the adoption of, it does require a public hearing. So we will ask you to have a public hearing. And in advance of that, I'm happy to take any questions and then request that you adopt the new rates for January 3rd, 2024, as well as the implementation plan and fee ordinance. So without taking questions.
All right, any questions for staff? Hearing, no questions for staff. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their deliberation. Mr. Casey?
Thanks, Josh. I appreciate what you and staff have done and the consultant. You know, looking over this and having conversations, I feel like, you know, we need to make sure growth pays for growth as we continue to grow. And I feel like, you know, based on the conversations, this is what you presented to us. This is what's going to happen. It's going to, that growth is going to be paying for that growth. I think it's important that we also kind of continue to take a look at this and revise it as necessary as costs change and things change. But I have no problem with it, I'm in support of it.
Anyone else?
I agree with Porter. I've been to a lot of these meetings before I was elected. So I was at a lot of these meetings where your information was presented, and there's been a lot of work that's gone into this and a lot of thought. And I do like the approach of putting this out on a schedule instead of one big hit. We roll this out this way, I like it.
Ms. Archer?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-01-01.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance number 24, number 2024-0101. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda is the 2023-138 ANX Leland A, Bless All Barber Annexation.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Today we have a petition for annexation into the town's limits. The applicant is seeking to annex 0.43 acres of contiguous real property into the town's limits. The property is located at 1412 Old US Highway 70, currently within our ETJ. It is, we didn't legal that, legal notice was published on December 20th. The meeting is held today. Here we have an image of kind of the general vicinity of where this property's parcel is located. Here is an image providing you, showing you the contiguous nature of this petition for annexation. You can see here that the yellow or beige areas are what has already been annexed or is part of the town limits, and the gray there is part of our ETJ. Currently, this parcel with the little red flag on it is in our ETJ. Here is an aerial view. There is, it's potentially vacant with only a remaining shed base left on the property, just for your consideration. And the future land use shows this area as a medium-density residential. This area is already zoned, that is, it's in our ETJ, no rezoning would be required if the annexation was approved today. So Town Council, an action is either approve or deny this annexation. I believe the applicant is here to speak if you have any questions.
All right, any questions or comments for staff? If not, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we adopt ordinance 2023-12-02.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance number 2023-12-02. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. And last, under public hearing, is the 2023-161 Annexation Lawson Glen Annexation.
Now, the applicant here is seeking to annex 27.3 acres of contiguous real property into the town limits. The owner and applicant is represented by D.R. Horton. Location is 60 Ranch Road. The legal ad was published on December 20th for this application. Again, here is an image showing you the general location of the site and the parcel that's. Again, here is an image showing you the general location of the site and the parcel that's seeking annexation. Here again is the parcel with the red flag on it there, along Ranch/Little Creek Church Road. And then we have Cobblestone, which would grant it its contiguous status there to the north. Again, the aerial view, this is also being built out and as part of the agreement for the development being approved, it was they had to annex into the town for town services. Here, there's no rezoning required, but again, just showing that this is in line with our current land use and no rezoning would be required. Town Council, can we take action to approve or deny this annexation? I did want to bring it to council's attention that for unknown reasons, the applicant has not been able to attend this public hearing. So should you decide you wish to continue this, you may, or you may move forward with an action as well.
All right. Questions or comments for staff? All right. Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Ms. Archer?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question. Maybe our attorney could help you out, help me out with this. Is there any pro or con to having this vote without the applicant in attendance?
Unless, unless the applicant has requested a delay, I would move ahead with it.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I am, I am supportive of the annexation and willing to make the motion unless other council would like to make comments.
I'd like to make a comment. I guess one thing we should realize here is this development is already underway. And this is, this is part of the, I guess, original design of the development, the annexed end. So I guess previous council had this in consideration, so I don't see any problem with it.
In that case, I can go ahead and make a motion. I would make a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-12-03.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2023-12-03. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Bruce. Up next, under Old Business, is the Clayton Community Park Construction Bid, Construction Project Bid Award.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Christopher Gwann, Engineering Department, Project Manager. The item I have before you tonight is a project update and bid award for the Clayton Community Park project. Okay, so just kind of give a little bit of a project update to give some context. So for this project recently, we had two rounds of bids on this. We had an original scope of work, and we actually had to come back and do a revised scope of work. So start at the top. For round one, we had issued a bid for July 2023. And then the bid opening was held in August 2023. And the bid results, we had to do an extension, was there was only one bidder, and it was $6.3 million, which the challenge with it, it significantly exceeded the, beyond the remaining park bonds budget dollars. And so we attempted to negotiate, and however, the difference was too great to kind of overcome that difference. So the conclusion was really to reject all bids. And decision was made to reduce the scope of work to be within budget. So for round two, coordinated with Parks and Recreation, the executive team, to try to hone in a scope that could, could work for this. And so we amended the bid documents, and they were issued in November. And then the bid opening we just had in December. This one, we had better results. We had three bids that were received with the lowest responsive, responsible bidder at 3.4 million for the base price, and then 3.7 million for all alternates included. This was, so the original scope of work, I think Joshua Verid had gone through this back in May with council. So just in general, we had two sections of it. We had the north section, which is kind of behind the community center. And then the south section, which is kind of Clayton Community Park proper area where the baseball fields are and everything. So in the north section, that's the tennis courts, pickleball, bocce ball, shuffleboard. There was a parking lot expansion, and then there was utilities that were along with it, water and sewer extension, stormwater infrastructure, as well as a stormwater pond that was with it. And then that also had a maintenance portion of it, was a lay-down yard with a building that was there. And then the south section, there was a large parking lot expansion, a reconstruction of the existing parking lot. There was a concrete plaza with a new slab that was kind of around that concession building. There were some utilities that went with it, the water extension, stormwater infrastructure, a couple of ponds. That also involved an entranceway that had to be widened and reconstructed. There was off-site improvements that were on Amelia Church Road, as well as included demolition of the playground, volleyball and tennis courts. There was an asphalt kind of walk path repair and realignment that was part of it. And then there was also a new playground. So as part of the scope of work, the new scope of work, pretty much the north section behind the community center mostly remained unchanged. The biggest thing was the maintenance building itself was removed. We kept the gravel yard itself so it could be utilized for storing any kind of equipment. And then we kept water and sewer service stubs there, so in the future, the building could be built, which is still desired, so at least it'd be ready for the building to go in. For the south section, that was where the majority of the changes really happened. It was really all the parking lot improvements, the plaza, the water and storm infrastructure, the stormwater ponds that were associated with the parking, the entranceway improvements, off-site improvements as well. And then the asphalt walk path repairs were actually done, but they were just done using some outside money to finish that. So pretty much it was really like the parking, what we did on that section, over the plan. That's the whole plan, if you see on the screen. We carved out kind of priorities on it, so you see these alternates where there's alternate four, five, two, and three up at the top. So we kind of picked certain areas that we wanted to focus on, on that side of things. The one that's on the left was really to remove the volleyball and remove the tennis courts and return it to natural grade. That would then prepare things for another project to go there. And then we would remove the playground that was kind of in the center of the, of the project, because a new playground was going to be built on the right side of it, beside the baseball fields. So the contractor would essentially realign that greenway trail and flatten it out so we can have a playground built there. And then the far right, that one is actually between the two parks, and that was to kind of interconnect them, so there's a continuous pathway between them. That is over by the community center, so that plan, as I mentioned, really was unchanged. Shows, shows all the sports courts, as well as the maintenance yard and expanded parking lot. So the bid results, so this one, the lowest responsive responsible bidder was S.T. Wooton. You can see there's a base price, and all the alternates I kind of ran through are all tallied up there. The total with all the alternates is 3.7 million. And that's the recommended award. And then just kind of a summary to kind of run through, just to kind of go through some of the mindset of, you know, as we were doing the scope modifications, we were looking for cost reduction since we were over. So this is the last project to be completed using the remaining funds from the park bonds. So this project slated the cost approximately five and a half million. That includes design, construction, owner vendors contingency, so that's the whole project itself. It's anticipated that the four and a half million dollar bond plus remaining funds from the previous bond issuance would cover this total project cost. We want to focus on value. We still want to maintain good value for the citizens providing amenities. So that's why we kept all the tennis courts and all the new, new features on that side. We wanted to minimize redesign since we had already designed it. We wanted to keep with the overall master plan. This kind of allows for any of the outside scope of work of this project that can actually be done in a future potential project, and it would all coordinate together. And then potential future projects, you know, completing demolition work or storing clean grass areas as part of the scope in that volleyball tennis court area. I know there's been many different projects discussed in that area, but that would at least prep it and have it ready for something in the future. And then connectivity, we want to make a continuous asphalt pathway between the north and south park areas. Right now, there's a section that's just pretty much a dirt road or a dirt path that is there, so we would make a continuous asphalt path between both of them. And then so the recommendation award, the construction contract for S.T. Wooton, they are the lowest responsive responsible bidder of the three total bids received. Staff and our consultant, Withers Ravanell, have reviewed all bid documents and recommended an award to S.T. Wooton Corporation to be inclusive of the bid, along with five alternates for a total of 3.76576. Staff requests Town Council to award the contract to S.T. Wooton Corporation and authorize a town manager or designate to execute a construction contract and any change orders required to deliver the project within the project budget. So that's all I had for tonight. If there are any questions, I can answer.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, sir, for the update.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, one other comment just to confirm, Chris. There are a couple other elements of the project that will be purchased separate from this bid, this bid contract as well.
Yes, yep. So when I said the five and a half million, that includes several owner kind of items. That includes, you know, lighting for the actual park itself. It includes the new playground that, in that area that it will be in. So it does include several owner items.
All right.
Do we, do we need to make a motion and a vote on that? Okay. Then in that case, I recommend, or I'd make a motion to approve the bid award and resolution 2024-07.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of bid award and resolution number 2024-07. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Appreciate it, Chris. Jumping on into staff reports, starting with the town manager.
Mayor, a couple thoughts. Over the holidays, I had an opportunity to kind of reflect on calendar year 2023 that we just closed out and just really reflect on all of the great accomplishments that we had as a team. Really appreciate our elected officials and the leadership and the vision you all provided us through 2023. But the more and more I thought about it, you know, we had a lot of successes, kind of big and small. We navigated some challenges, but really, you know, the staff kind of worked tirelessly to kind of improve things up and down for, for the residents of Clayton last year. And I just want to take a moment to thank them for all their efforts for last year. And really looking forward to what 2024 is going to bring us, because we've got some more, some more interesting projects and some more initiatives that we're getting off the ground. So we're really excited for what's coming on. But just really wanted to thank everybody for all their efforts and looking forward to 2024. Two quick items in terms of dates. Just did want to mention that we are closed Monday, the 15th, and observance of Martin Luther King Day, Jr. Day, excuse me. Then obviously pushed the Town Council meeting to Tuesday, the 16th. So just want to make that point of note. And then last, just want to say Happy UDO Day. One of those great accomplishments you had from last year was the implementation of a new UDO that effectively went, went to effect today. So appreciate all the hard work on that from you and the staff and all the residents that contributed to that as well. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
Any other staff? I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward. No one wishing to speak. I'll turn it over to council for comments. Wow. Well, I have a comment. So 2023 was a very good year for the town of Clayton. A lot of progress was made, and there's more progress to come in 2024. Clayton's a very special place. It's my hometown. It's been the hometown for many people over the years, and it became the new hometown for many people in 2023. Clayton is, and I hope always will be, a town that welcomes others into the fold. The combination of those who have lived here forever and those who are new to our town is what makes the fabric of the community of the town of Clayton so unique and so incomparable to any other. Clayton's the greatest place I know, and the people are what makes it. And it's what makes our town great, and it's what makes our town a great place to live, work, and play. So on behalf of the town of Clayton, I wish you all a very happy and successful 2024. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Good night.